Welcome everybody to Town Hall number seventy-five. It's November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And today we're joined by Romo, Tavvo, Walter, Grace, Ian, Judith, Sugar and Spice and William. And admitting DMO to the room as well. Welcome all. Thanks for joining. Um, I put a little outline of the agenda on the first slide. Uh, we start off with a couple of uh mentions. Ecosystem-wide stuff that's happening. And then we do go uh to the Q four proposal for the Treasury. Uh, we're hitting the final steps there, uh, but we do have to uh talk about it one more time. And after that, we'll have space for the workgroup updates and then there's room for open topics. And then a quick reminder on um what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Uh, we're a group of um people that share the mission and vision of the Singularity ecosystem and want to contribute to spreading the word. Uh, we do this in a whole collection of self-organizing workgroups. Uh, where pretty much everybody can join in on the fun and and help out. There's all kind of different um projects you can uh you can help on. There's, for example, there's all kind of marketing activities, there's governance, there's treasury, there's strategy, um, we have a lot. So hop onto our Discord server if you're not there already and you will find the Getting Started channel there. That will get you started. So hope to see you on there. And yeah, starting off, um, as I mentioned to um two mentions, uh, first one is for the deep funding town hall, which takes place this Thursday at nineteen UTC. Uh, it alternates between the focus group and uh deep funding itself. And this week, uh, it will be deep funding itself. Uh, so Thursday nineteen UTC for that. And then a second mention, uh, for which I'd like to give the words to Grace. Actually, we joined us. Thanks a lot for joining.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Oh, look, I've got a slide showing. So yeah, I um am one of the three people who's been elected to the Supervisory Council. And um, I think I've probably been the most involved in the Supervisory Council process of the three. And um, one of the things that we noticed right away was that we don't know why we were elected. You know, there were a bunch of really great candidates and we wish that we knew why it was us that was chosen so that we could execute on whatever it is people think that we should be doing. And I was thinking back to when we did the Sway platform and we all contributed to what we think the Supervisory Council should be. But no way really, like, it didn't seem like there was a conclusion reached. And so we're generally here to create a blueprint, but we're not the ones to write it. We're gonna have a task force write this blueprint for decentralizing the governance. And one of the disappointments, I think, was that uh only eighty-two wallets voted. And there are seventy thousand token holders. So it's a really, really low percentage of involvement in getting us elected. So I'd really like to work a lot with you guys to to look at how we can really expand involvement. And that might not just be voting, you know, that might be the Discord channels, it might be other ways that people contribute. Because you really can't decentralize unless you have actual people who are gonna take on roles. So that's sort of where we are. As the Supervisory Council, we're going to be, right now, we're gonna be interviewing a bunch of you. So definitely reach out directly to me or to any of the other members. Um, if you'd like to either, I think that Daniel already published the form on the Telegram group. So anybody who wants to just fill out the form, that's great. If you wanna actually have a conversation with one of us, let us know. We'll be happy to talk to you, um, you know, have have a call, understanding your concerns. And that process is gonna be two or three weeks. Um, and then we're gonna come up with a practical plan. What are we gonna do during these six months? Um, of the Supervisory Council. Um, any of you who have applied for or are just interested to know what's gonna happen with the task force, well, we don't know what to do with the task force until we describe our tasks. So that's gonna take another few weeks before we actually uh know what to do with the task force because we wanna define the task. Um, and then the final thing just to mention is that um we won't be super active on the Discord or Telegram. And the reason is simply that we've been, we we've, our our um our ta- our our job has been defined as four to six hours a week. And we meet with each other one hour a week. And every other week, we meet with the foundation. And then we're gonna have open office hours also with you guys, starting Monday. There's uh Monday at, I think it's three PM UTC or two PM UTC, it should be on the calendar. Um, and I've announced that. We'll be meeting with you also. Uh, this time it'll be all three of us, but we're gonna probably limit to one of us each time in the future because we wanna make the best of this four to six hours that each of us has allocated for the position. So we just wanna be really clear about that so that people understand, like, we're here as the Supervisory Council, but we've been allocated a really small number of hours to do a really big task. And so we're gonna try and make that um within our office hours rather than, you know, being very active on the Discord and things like that. So, yeah. Any questions? I'm happy to take.
Thanks a lot for that. Anybody in the room?
Uh, so the officer is gonna be all three of you?
This week on Monday, we're gonna do all three of us. I think it's three PM my time, so it might be two PM UTC. Because uh Johnny is in Singapore, so that's kind of the latest he can do. So it may be inconvenient for those on the West Coast. But in, after this first one where we wanna meet as many people as possible, we'll probably take turns. And we'll have it at times that'll be different for different people around the globe. But this time it'll be all three of us.
Right, yeah, totally. It's uh, it's interesting. Yeah, what what is somewhat surprising to me is that uh it's probably a feature, but all three that got elected are kind of like outsiders. Um, like, I don't even know one of the fellows Discord handle stuff like that, you know?
Yeah, it is interesting. Um. I mean, I don't know if we're totally outsiders. I've been involved a little bit in, you know, some of the ambassador things and you guys I've been in a number of these meetings and Daniel is funded through Deep Dow in this round of funding. And Johnny is definitely an AI expert, so, and he was involved in the past.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't mean outsiders as in not totally belonging and deserving, but just like, you know, not TiVo, for example, you know? Who is like the mainstay and is uh in every meeting and so on. Uh, another thing was kind of curious to me on initially the charter was to represent token holders. But then the language changed to represent the community, which kind of like, okay, I I get I get the community, but the two are very different things, at least in my mind. I hope you're representing the community.
As far as I can understand from the foundation people from our last meeting, they think the community is the token holders. There's some difference in opinion between Jan and David, but uh, the community certainly includes the token holders. To me, it includes anybody who's involved in any of the things that are going on. Um, and I would guess if you're in the ambassador program, you probably end up holding at least some tokens. Uh, I'm not sure how you are differentiating it.
Well, it's like, like you described, there are seventy thousand wallets and there are like hundreds some votes. That to me is the difference. Is the, you know, that, like, yeah, the tokens I hold are the a few dozen that they got for participating in in the ambassador program.
Yeah, I mean, I think that uh, yeah, part and part of the mandate is to get more people involved. And whether that's gonna be token holders or developers or what kinds of people we wanna get involved, I think will be, you know, up for discussion, but uh fundamentally, it's the same job that you guys have. It's like, how do we get more people involved? Because we can't have centralized governance otherwise.
So anyways, I'm totally looking forward to you letting us know how to do a DAO that works. It's much needed. It's, to me at least, it's still not a solved problem. You know, a vibrant and fair and, you know, real depth. And you to me are the expert, the worldwide singular amazing expert in the field.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate that. Uh, no pressure, right? Um, but yeah, and and I think Daniel is definitely one of the, I think, we were actually talking about it last week. I think there's probably three or four people who are really at the cutting edge and he's definitely one of them. And so, yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for those questions. Um, quick check, anybody else in the room? Has any questions for now? And if not forever, or well, at least until coming Monday, hold your peace.
Yeah, that's right. Please come on Monday and, you know, we'll have more time to answer questions about the Supervisory Council.
All right, cool. Um, well, thanks again, Grace, for for hopping on. And yeah, looking forward as well. Cool. Uh, then uh moving uh to the next one. Uh, it's a nice one. It's the Q four budget. Um. I'm not sure if any of you read on um on Discord, but I posted um basically a bit of of context for this. Uh, we hope to have um a vote by all ambassadors and workgroup leads during next town hall. So a week from now. And up until that uh time, the proposal is uh, it it's still live and you can access it. And we also uh made a feedback form for that. And yeah, basically, we we hope to finally uh finalize this um queue for budgeting. Um, I did include in that message, um, one of the main lessons learned is start earlier. I think we uh, we we all kind of agree with that. Um, hopefully we get to a situation where we're not spending all the time discussing quarterly budgets. Um, yeah, I do want to put a final uh call out for please do check that document uh and and provide feedback if you haven't already. Uh, you can do it on the form. Uh, you can also just do it on the on the usual channels. And then during next uh, next week's town hall, also the the feedback collected uh will be answered. Um, or implemented if it's great feedback and uh ready to implement, of course. And yeah, hopefully by next week's town hall, we can conclude this uh process. I think practically speaking, we're already kind of acting as if it's implemented, as in we're not uh withholding any um task rewards based on this proposal not being implemented. I think it's not that big of a divergence from Q three budget that would have warranted. And also, we would have, I mean, looking at the date, it's um, we're in week seven of the quarter right now. Uh, so that would just be completely impractical. And yeah, that's pretty much it for now, I guess. Any questions in the room about this? Which haven't been asked already, because we have spent a lot of time on this already. Or anything I'm I'm skipping and should be touching on right now? I think uh, I'll take that as an uh, we're pretty much done with the topic kind of answer. Uh, ah, thanks for putting the the link in uh in chat as well. All right.
We had to get the bureaucracy over with. It's a, it's a added complexity, but it comes with the time and pressure people put behind their work. So it needed some clarification and, yeah, budget limitation because people do more work than we have resources for. That's that's discussion we need to have. I guess it will continue to be so.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's the different models that uh we could theoretically experiment within Q one, um, maybe on workgroup level to then, you know, in the next step. Um, if successful, um, implement wider. I think the the main um thing we we simply what we don't need to change, but something that would be good to to change is like Q three budget fed into the projections for Q four. Rather than actual workgroup level, this is what we want to do and this is the work we want to put uh in the next quarter. That should be leading. Um, but it's also basically part of the time constraints um within this discussion that yeah, we we can't take the full quarter discussing its its own budget. Other.
So just to let the rest of the folks know, because this discussion was mostly in the Treasury Guild. So to me at least, the uh, open question, because budget reflects priorities. Right? So, you know, next years and so on. So the pending question in my mind is whether indeed there is a distinction between external and internal focus of various efforts. And to me, it's self-evident, but that's been questioned. And then if there is, then whether we should rebalance the external side from the current very roughly forty-sixty and then externals more towards sixty-fourty or seventy-thirty or something like that. So again, you know, that was my main objection to the budget is, you know, what I wanted to do is to uh, to do the sequester only on the internal activities and leave the external ones as as requested. And you're right, it doesn't matter any longer. We're gonna approve it at the end of November and December, the holiday season. But overall, I think the organization needs to very much uh, talk about this. Uh, you know, to me, an ambassador is all about outreach. The very, the embassy is when you go to other people's land and establish relationships and on and on, you know? Working on the document in your own little corner and talking with one or, you know, or two other insiders of the organization does not accomplish that. So I don't know what other mechanism I can use to keep pitching this, you know, to me, again, self-evident idea. I'm not sure, but I'd like to express it and I'll do the same next town hall and the next town hall.
Fair enough. Fair enough. You you did make that point multiple times. Um, and I I think people agree. At the same time, there's also the the answer that's been given to that is that there's not so much a clear distinction between uh, for a lot of workgroups at least, it's 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 not clear whether they are internal or external focused. Like, there's not this this clear distinction so much. So that creates, well, that makes it harder to to say like, well, now we shift from sixty percent internal to thirty percent. And we focus instead of forty, we push seventy towards external. But yeah, generally speaking, I I do think the people agree on on the need for more external focus. That's, yeah, I I think, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I do think people agree with that. Also noting that building infrastructure later on helps you to, well, have in place what you need for for that proper external outreach. Um, hmm. Anybody else on the topic? I see no hands, I don't think. Then let's keep it at it for now. Um, hmm, yeah, okay. So yeah, just to to reiterate, next week, both of them, and then hopefully can move forward. Because if we want to start in time with the Q one budget, uh, we're pretty much getting to the point in time where we need to start that process. And hopefully have it finished uh before the quarter starts. And then we can actually have maybe like two months where we don't need to discuss budgets. That would be uh, would be amazing to me. All right, uh, moving on, we get to the workgroup updates. Let's have a quick check in the room, uh, because first on the list is incubation. I don't think we have a fly in the room. We do not. I also believe, and let me confirm that quickly, that last week's got canceled. So I assume there's not too much to update on that. Um. I haven't uh, seen confirmation of session in an hour from now happening. Uh, did anybody get any confirmation on that by any chance?
I've been, no, no confirmation on the group. Still, I thought it was still okay, uh, a slot later on this afternoon. I don't know. I have no news from flying since last, since last week.
I do see an iPhone entering the room, so there's a chance.
Okay. Yeah, so so Curtis uh puts his hand on the, one of the documents from the research project. So we have some uh, progress on some of the tasks. Um. So we were planning on discussing today, so we'll see.
All right. Cool. Then then second on the list is the archival workgroup. And Vanessa, can I ask you for a little update?
You can indeed, yeah. Um, we had a nice meeting last week where we had a couple of new people come in, which is great. And our next meeting is not tomorrow, but next Wednesday, when we're gonna take things a little bit more slowly and go through how the GitHub Problems Board works um for new people who've been getting involved. So if you've always wanted to know a bit more about that, or if you feel like you'd like to use GitHub a bit more, but your confidence is a bit low, this would be a good meeting to come to. So not Wednesday, but the Wednesday after. We're also getting really close to launching our meeting summaries tool and we're testing it in a couple of workgroups. And picking out the books, fixing them, and then hopefully we'll be able to launch it at a town hall. I'm not gonna give a date because there's a few things backed up and booked, but yeah, we wanna do that soon. So yeah, all good.
Nice. Thank you very much. Then next on the list is the the WorkBBL workgroup. Tavvo.
The workgroup we will have tomorrow. And uh, there will be one additional item because the website got updated again, and now there is more connection with uh part of metadata. And there is infrastructure change where there are going to be three different top access tokens for creators, facilitators and students. So that's on background is working. Um, yeah, we will create some recorded videos to share on YouTube tomorrow, uh, while I share it live. And if you're interested, join us to to see it there. And share some feedback to some mediation. And then we are going to, if Tiv is working, it has been messing with us uh this week and not working all the time. So if it does work on the meeting, we will also continue to play through the tasks we create ourselves, mainly do the learning actions. That is a P bill.
Yes, thank you. Uh, next on the list is the Strategy Workgroup. And I believe uh, that doesn't happen too often. Hadel is not in the in the room. Uh, I do think it's close to Thanksgiving-related situation, which uh might be the cause of that. Um, broadly speaking, um. I do know tomorrow's session uh will happen. Uh, last week's session got uh canceled in favor of asynchronous work on the uh, on the document for the uh roundtable uh formation, let's say. Uh, pretty sure in this Strategy Workgroup channel, you can find a link to there uh, to the documents. Uh, so it's an invite still standing for anybody uh who's interested. Do comment, do build a document out. It will be covered uh during tomorrow's session. Then onto the Treasury Guild. Brings us back to Tavvo, I think. Yes. Looking for the M U button perhaps? I'm not sure. Tavvo, you with us?
Yes.
Cool.
I was looking for a reaction in the chat. And for Treasury with and yeah, I I think last time I wasn't able to join, but looking back at the meeting summaries uh, a lot of discussions were into like the Treasury Insights. And then amendments were made for the Google Form that was shared for in this town hall. So that, that was like two main topics. And and next week, we will continue several of not not the same task, but like more general information from some workgroups and how they yeah, like to recognize their contributions and how can we improve that process from writing it down and auditing and rewarding it. And then if I would like to start picking up the Power BI and kind of connecting that now to, hey, how can you open it up and see the dashboards and stuff on yourself? So I'm thinking we're moving towards that.
I can't wait till the online dashboard has similar functionality to uh Power BI. It might be a while, but uh we'll get there eventually, I think. Uh, cool. Uh, then moving on, uh, brings us to onboarding. And I'm aware, Sugar, your voice is not that great. Uh, is there anybody in the room that's uh?
Yeah, I can take it. Yeah, onboarding group has got some news this week. Um. First of all, we're focusing on the whole concept of what we're calling continuous onboarding. When somebody joins the ecosystem, onboarding doesn't stop. It's like a process. So we are planning to try and chat with other workgroups to find out how they do this and see if we can pull together some ideas and some learning that we can all use. So if you're a workgroup lead, you'll probably be hearing from us if you haven't already going, oh, can we come to one of your meetings and have a chat about how you support new people? The second thing is that we're doing some research into kind of what people's onboarding experience has been. And we don't just mean joining the ecosystem. We mean what happens to make you feel part of it and make you feel at home here. So we've got a survey and I'm putting the link in the chats and we'll also be sharing it around Discord as well. The closing date is Friday, the first of December, and it just basically asks you some things about what your onboarding experience was. There's a little re- um, reward for taking part of ten A J X. It's just token, but um ah, token, no pun intended. But um, yeah, we'd really value it if people could give us their insights on this. And then we'll try and pull together after the first of December, some insights into what people have said. All right, cheers.
Thanks a lot for that. Um, and for putting the link in chat as well. Cool. Uh, then next on the list is incubation AI sandbox. I did not attend the last session. Um. Anybody here wants to give a quick update on how that went? Let me check when the next session is. Uh, it should be, yeah, that's uh, this Thursday, uh, eighteen UTC. And usually uh on beforehand, uh, Flight puts a bit in the incubation channels, uh. Yeah, foreshadowing what will be uh done during the session. So do look forward to that. Then we get to the video workgroup. Um.
One. Yes.
Um, by the way, by the way, before um, you had off, I do want to thank you for last week's uh tunnel hosting. It was uh I don't know, it felt like, oh shit, now I'm just gonna board people with my own head again. You should be doing it actually, but uh, yeah, thanks a lot for that.
That's, it it's fine. It was uh, yeah, it was an experience. But yeah, I mean, hopefully it did go well. Uh, thankfully, it did go well. So yeah, hopefully, I mean, people weren't too bothered with the new phase and uh, I mean, I didn't do too well in the management of everything, but uh I mean, whatever. Anyway, about the video workgroup. So, um. So there is the regular stuff. Uh, regular stuff is uh working on, you know, editing this town hall that you're in, putting it on YouTube, and hopefully you're watching, checking it out. Uh, if if you're not coming to a meeting, you know, it wouldn't hurt to to check out what Uh, if if you're not coming to a meeting, you know, it wouldn't hurt to to check out what what happened. Uh, there is also the the small bit, the summary that we also put out in Twitter and other channels. And um, again, check that out if you don't have much time. It takes sixty seconds to get updated, so not that bad. Uh, and that's the regular stuff. Uh, let's say the the new stuff for this week, uh, we put out three uh, three tasks. Uh, these three tasks are basically three videos to be made, and we made the decision collectively uh to make each video done by two people. And it's first come, first served uh basis, and also no not uh one person cannot get the couple of uh two videos or more uh because of, you know, um, we wanna keep it fair and everyone gets some, let's say, something to do basically in the workgroup. Uh, but yeah, um, the three videos are the following. Uh, so we have uh latest ecosystem updates uh video. We also have the rejuven token migration event uh video, uh, talking a bit about what's gonna happen on the rejuven side. And also uh something that people have been asking a lot about, as you can see from the from Discord, uh, Cardano's taking. So we're gonna do a video about that, explain a bit what the hell is going on and how can you get involved? How can you get some staking going on? A lot of people have been asking about that, so why not make a video about it? Uh, we also have been working about shorts. Uh, that was, you know, requested by uh the social media side management, and also a lot of people from the workgroup have been like, okay, we have some content, we would like to do something with it, so why not make some shorts and, you know, kind of do some clickbaity stuff so that people watch our stuff and then get onboarded perhaps in the in into the ambassador program or to just know more about Singularity Net. So we're kind of trying to do that. Um, yeah, uh, I think that's about it. Um. I really hope you're uh, again, you're following us on social media, you're watching our stuff. And please give a feedback. I mean, um, whether it's a comment or a like or dislike on social media, whether it's just something on Discord, a message going like, yeah, the last video wasn't really good edited, a good edit, or not really catchy, something like that, any type of feedback, negative, positive, doesn't matter, uh, would be greatly appreciated. Otherwise, uh, see you next week and hopefully with some new uh videos. Thank you.
You. Good stuff. Um, that brings us to the Writers' Work Group. Konnichi. Um, Konnichi is is in the house, yes. Konnichi, could you give us a short update on the Writers' Work Group?
Um, definitely. Uh, yeah, so today's update is actually going to be short, so yeah. Um, we currently uh actually have a few tasks on our board, uh, so we still have tasks uh coming out soon. Um, I'd know, uh, I think two calls back, so I mentioned that we're gonna be uh making a lot of uh articles, and we're gonna be having a lot of tasks basically uh right now being made. And uh probably still gonna have a few more before this month runs out. So that way we have content uh for the entire month of uh December, or at least maybe even the uh, maybe like half or something. But as long as we have content, so we don't have to um bother people like um, it's not necessarily expecting anyone to hang around doing the uh festivities and everything uh that comes with the end of the year. So yeah, uh, we have content on that. And at the same time, we uh started recently with the trivia on Friday. So uh anyone can join. It's by seventeen UTC in our trivia channel. Uh, yeah, I think this week will be our third, our fourth, I think, yes. So yeah, I mean, you can join in. Uh, it's something that we're going, that's ongoing now. And you can um al- always uh stitch into our latest article on Medium for clues on uh what uh the trivia will be about each week. And uh, yeah, that's our current focus. And uh on um, uh, I think the last thing on our uh focus for this quarter would be the Zili, which uh we still need a bit of uh Discord integration. So that way, whenever there are new tasks to do on Zili, it gets popped up directly in the trivia channel on Discord. And that way, whenever uh there'll be a leaderboard every, probably every week, and or just to keep people updated on who's uh topping the Zili board for probably every week. So we'll stop in it for that week, uh, so they can have like the monthly collection. So yeah, uh, that's uh the focus. Hopefully, um, before this week runs out, we can, I think on my side, I'm done with the uh initial setup of tasks and uh points and the whole point structure for people to pick up the task. So once the uh probably reach out to you, Peter, on that, once the integration is done and uh we can integrate it to our Twitter and all to, so that way, once we make an announcement, everything is simultaneous and everybody uh knows. So that we can use it even more for our announcements and everything that's happening in the ecosystem. So everybody gets pinned on Twitter and Discord. Uh, and uh, yeah, I think that's our, that's the last thing for us to cover. And uh, yeah, we'll be all set for the next uh quarter. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I didn't join the trivia session myself, but it was nice to see all the explosions happening there on Discord. Looked like uh people were having a good time. Uh, cool. Uh, that brings us to the Saturday with the Gamers Guild. Do we have anybody from Gamers Guild in the room? I think not. Uh, they had a session, oh wait, that's actually a week and a half ago.
As far as I know, they've got a session this Saturday. But I don't know if it's on the calendar.
It's not. Usually Slate asks for this. Uh, let me reach out there.
I could just say, if Slate's not here, I could just say that we were talking about Gamers Guild a bit in onboarding, and we were just saying how it is probably quite a cool onboarding tool and helps us reach some of the kinds of people that we might not otherwise reach. So it just feels like a good thing. And I think what we were saying is it'd be really cool to see ambassadors there because then people who come, who are there for the games, maybe get to know a bit about the community.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Uh, I have to admit, for me, Saturday afternoon is not ideal. Um, yeah, that being said, when I'm available, I'm I'm happy to hop on there. Oh, you're right.
You know, being on Saturday is not ideal, I would say. Uh, maybe, I don't know, if it was another day, that it would be a little bit more easier to join. But yeah, I mean, uh, I don't know, man. I guess that's another conversation, maybe changing the time to make it more accessible. Or is it even necessary? I don't know, to be honest.
Maybe we should feed that back to Slate and see what he thinks, if people are saying that they would go if it wasn't a Saturday.
Yeah, fair. Um, yeah, that would be fine to do that uh through Discord or Franken. I'll I'll mention it, uh, but I'll, I think I also just call it out in the channel. That's the most transparent, I guess. Cool. Uh, that brings us to the Knowledge Base Work Group and back to Taffo again.
Yeah, it's a, it's an asynchronous week where we do activities behind the scenes and now we're meeting to this week. But uh next week, we will then review what we have done. We shared out the videos, uh, like all the activities that you can do on My Board, which is including links or yeah, analyzing the provider document or formatting the uh My Board. Like, these are the main focus points, and we do it in like circles, a little bit of everything in each session until we feel satisfied. We did discuss a bit of a roadmap, um, but uh like how much of the links we should gather and stuff like that. Um, yeah, all of that information is available on My Board, and if you are keen to know what are the rewards, how much you will need to get your point, like what, what, how much time we need to spend before being like an active contributor, because there is a limit to uh, and in a sense that you can't just join meetings in order to have like a impact, because it's a bit more complicated, like it brings together different um things that happen on Ambassador Program. And it requires a bit of like asynchronous thinking, like, okay, here is a channel, this is what they do, and this is the documents they produce. And you can't really carry that on just in the course, really. But if you touch join the goal, it's good on board, in a sense, if you like to think in like a system thinking, where what's in general, what's happening here? What is the documentations they provide? What are the methods they use, what tools they use? And have like an overlapping idea if you are in 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 a different mindset of when you join in these programs that different ecosystems provide. Join us if any of that, what I just said, made sense.
Thanks for that. I do actually see um it overlaps, roughly with the Developer Work Group. They took a slot where there's now every, yeah, it's a bi-weekly call for on Knowledge Base Work Group. That's maybe not optimal, but uh, yeah, maybe it's fine. I'm not sure. Just noting it.
Yeah, we changed the also acknowledge space time to from sixty minutes to ninety minutes because it we did feel like we kind of get the ground running in sixty minutes, but we have always like extra energy because now we have the holistic view of all the data sets, how we research them, how do we organize them, and it would be like a perfect scenario to actually analyze even more in a quite faster pace. Um, so it's why it's slightly longer than usual.
Okay, okay, makes sense.
But yeah, who, who suit, and they, if they want to join Developer Work Group, that's like, it's fine.
Yeah, fair. I think those interested in both would then uh do one hour, knowledge-based, one hour developer, I guess. Uh, alright, then uh next on the list is Education Work Group, where I usually give a turn to Haddaf. I can give a quick update there. Um. From my side, last uh, well, yesterday, actually, uh, last Monday, yesterday, we um um discussed a couple of uh infographics that were created, and they're also shared in the in the Education Work Group uh channel. And these are aimed at uh providing a bit of an overview for like uh of spin-off projects within the ecosystem. And the aim is to also include a list of resources for further diving in. Um. Yeah, that's combined, then will be a a package of information, which um, if you go through all of it, you'll be educated on that spin-off, and you uh you'll have all the knowledge there is to know. Well, it's a bit of a work in progress still. Um. I think Haddaf will put an update on the uh channel there. Uh, yeah, maybe it's also because of um this holiday season that it's it's not there right now. Oh, and actually, I see um there's um governance workgroup is missing there. Um. Earlier today, we did have a session, um, with um Ning from uh Snapbrilia. It was very interesting. It's um, they've got a a token-based uh voting system for on Discord. And yeah, basically, it gave us a bit of an introduction. Um, also Kendrick from Photrec was present. He organized it more or less. Uh, or arranged uh Snapbrilia putting a demo. And well, yeah, so we we also covered uh quadratic voting and plural quadratic voting. Uh, it's 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 very interesting topics. I I think the the whole session will be, it was recorded. It it should pop up on uh on YouTube. Um, some of it is is more focused on on deep funding, like um, within the Ambassador Program, we don't really have like plural voting where you would divide an amount of points between five proposals. And so you can indicate which proposal aligns the most with um, rather than a yes/no vote. Uh, you can distribute points. Um, yeah, that that doesn't really fit our internal governance, really. Uh, but for deep funding, it's it's really interesting. And yeah, maybe we'll experiment within the Ambassador Program before um kind of implementing, i- if successful, implementing something uh within deep funding. So yeah, I can uh can recommend uh checking out that session uh once it pops up. Alright, uh, then I.
I think we skipped Developer Work Group.
Yes, I did not do so. Apologies. So, and then last, not last on the list, and last on the list, but uh, yes, Developer Group, sorry.
Uh, Guillermo, would you like to take care of that? But I can go for whatever you'd like.
Go for it, go for it. I did a couple of times, so I think you have the.
Alright, for sure. Alright, so uh, I'll keep it very short. I mean, uh, last time we met, uh, we discussed uh, uh, well, not many people joined, that's that's one. Uh, but in the same time, we did discuss uh the ongoing um, uh, let's say, uh, document, the proposal that we're working on. Uh, we did uh discuss uh keeping it short, keeping the document short, and not really going through the details of possible projects to work on and all these kind of things. Uh, mainly because we would like it to be an easy read for everyone. Uh, and not a headache, basically, uh, in case you would like to contribute to the document. In the same time, we did discuss two projects that we will start with. Uh, the projects are uh a dashboard analytics for our social media that exports to Google Sheet. Uh, in short, to just getting data from our social media and putting it on 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 Google Sheet uh as an easy export for KPIs and all these kind of things. Uh, the second one uh relates to deep funding, so we would like to do an experiment for uh how to score uh contributions in terms of, you know, people who write comments on proposals and these kind of things, how can we judge their contribution? Well, how can we score their contribution? Uh, we're thinking to use uh GPT API and these kind of things to to add to do like a mix of human AI scoring and see what will come out of that. Um, and then uh hopefully we'll present that to the community once anything substantial is being done. Um. We, again, we're thinking about a lot of projects, but we wanna keep it concise, simple in the beginning. Once we start delivering, then more people will join us. We'll work on bigger projects. And yeah, hopefully something will uh, great things will come out of this group. Um. But yeah, I mean, thank you. Uh, we also, just a small detail, we also don't have a group lead, workgroup lead. Uh, so it's been, you know, me and Guillermo exchanging like uh kind of presenting for this group, but there is no workgroup lead. Uh, mainly, I don't know, uh, I think this this workgroup specifically doesn't need a workgroup lead, but more of like a project manager for a specific project. And if you go to another project, maybe a different project manager would work. Uh, but that's again, another conversation for another day. Uh, thank you again for listening, and yeah, that's enough for me.
Thanks a lot for that. Uh, anything to add there, Guillermo? I see your thumbs up. Nice. Alright, cool. Um, yeah, then a quick reminder on our uh public calendar. Uh, if you add it to your own calendar, you won't have to miss any of these sessions ever. And that does bring us uh with about three, four minutes on the clock uh to the open round. If there's any topics we should discuss, any amazing ideas, uh newcomers that want to introduce themselves, feel free to.
I guess this is probably a good time for me to say hi. Uh, I don't think, I mean, I know Peter, but I don't know if I know any of you. Um, but I'm Russ. I work at uh Singularity DAO uh and also have done uh lots of work for the various launches and stuff and Sophia verse currently. Um, and there has been talk about um uh Ambassador Programs being kind of unified across SNET. So um, basically, Peter's Ambassador Program here is uh doing pretty well. We we want to replicate it across the ecosystem. Um, and basically, yeah, we don't, there's no lead on it. Me and Peter have been talking about it. I've spoken with John about it and a few other people. Um, I think Haley's informed. I'm not sure about I B. But so if any of you want to sort of go off and have a think about how that could possibly work, uh, if you want to join in with discussions about it, then please uh feel free. Um, and uh, yeah, so it's just a a start. It's an introduction. I'll be sort of hanging around and try and make some more of these town halls and um I'll be coming with my own ideas and hopefully Peter will. But yeah, as I said, yeah, I'm not sure how. But yeah, as I said, yeah, I'm not sure how we're gonna do it. We've talked about it. Do we have one Discord? Do we have multiple Discords? Do we? You know, how do we arrange this? Are people interested in working across the ecosystem? I presume it would be interesting for people to, to, to drop into other projects and. Sort of see how they work and to do what you do here, but also do it across ecosystem wide. So, so yeah, so hi, everyone.
Thanks a lot for that, Russ. Good stuff. Um, yeah, but the, the, the timing is, is perfect in a way. Uh, we started, um, last week, uh, with, with, um. Reaching out to, to spinoffs within the ecosystem. Uh, there's, there's a bunch of, of things we, well, there's a lot of things we can do for a lot of spinoffs, uh, like the sky's the limit in a way. Uh, but it, yeah, I think it's all about getting that, that initial conversation going and figuring out what the spinoffs are looking for. Also what, um, people are looking for to do for a project.
I mean, already I've heard stuff which is fairly interesting, um, which I'm sure other people will be interested, other projects will be interested, right? But as you said, some, some, some of them may not have. That kind of need for reaching out. I think the main thing over at Estal, which we're talking about is, uh, more localization. Uh, we want, we need people from other countries that we can't necessarily reach through traditional advertising means to. To, as someone else said earlier on about being an actual ambassador, right? And sort of going out and spreading the word, that kind of thing. Uh, but that's, that's just purely Estal. Sevilla verse probably have another thing they want, Hypercycle. And, and another thing, right? And then however many spinoffs there are down the road, right? They're all gonna need stuff. So if there's a base for them, um, I think that would be great. But yeah, how do we do that? Do we have a bloated Discord? Do we have a one giant D-work? I don't know. I'm not really sure at the moment.
I will try to start with a downhill, call as many people from your community and then see who joins up and based. Because the way this program kind of inception was based on tools who joined. These people kind of self-coven and created the things they were good at and. It wasn't like, okay, we need this thing and then we look out to find these people, but we use what we had and. Sources. Um, if there is like a community of at least already, I don't know, five to six people, you're gonna get. Good team going on, who knows what to do probably next, but. Is that's less, then yeah, I, I guess the second option maybe like. Using ambassador program as a service to get outreach out. I think that would be maybe more impactful, because then you're kind of building a network within, within our own ecosystem. And leveraging services within us. But yeah, hopefully the first option will be. We like work out, because that's like more powerful where you have like a passion and people who wants. Estal to succeed and also finds that, oh, I can just join and. On my free time and, and contribute and that is recognized and rewarded. And that, that's usually goes far further than. Yeah. Sharing like in, in this ambassador team who can beat this project.
Hmm, I think, I think the thing that I'm thinking is that. We, we were talking about, we don't want so much splintered, so like, it's like a separate Estal one, a separate. Uh, Hypercycle one, a separate Sophia verse one, it kind of splinters it out, whereas if there was sort of one big. Space where different people could all sort of cross-communicate. And if something good happens one place, it could be then instantly replicated. Everyone in the ecosystem could be like, oh, I like this idea. This is great. Let's just replicate it. And so it'd be more of a, a bigger knowledge sharing rather than individual groups of, um, ambassadors all sort of sitting in their own. Respective projects. So it's that organization that I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I fully agree. It would, um. Prevent a whole bunch of reinventing the wheel.
Exactly.
We've been at it for a while and, uh. At the same time, I do agree with, uh, whatever says, like, it, it is stronger if you've got like. Um. You know, on, on Telegram, there's tons of people who are just like Estal.
Yeah.
Or Hypercycle or Rejuve or Nunez, like these communities do exist, however, it's certainly been. Well, crazy difficult bridging, um. Telegram users over to Discord or the other way around.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's technically, there's bridges, like actual bridges, which make the channels copy all the shit back and forth, but. That might be the, the biggest challenge, I think, like getting the. Getting people to either use Discord or Telegram while they're not used to it. Like in the enters, um. And I'm, I'm sure that all, all the spin-off projects have. Properly motivated people that care about spreading the words and, yeah. Contribute. Yeah, but this is, yeah, this, this will be something, I mean. This is not something we're gonna have arranged by end of next week, right? Um. I think it's gonna be a whole bunch of discussions and figuring out, um. Testing it out, figuring out how to go about it.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, you talk, I'm mute, so. From this ambassador's perspective, uh, what I mentioned, the knowledge-based workgroup. My own vision is that the output is replicable, like you said, like, hey, why don't we share knowledge, like. I mean, ideally that will be like a website where it lists different frameworks of like a. Of an ambassador program and then you can kind of map it out to you have these elements in your system or do you want to re-implement it? Because there will be like different workgroups, there are proposals. Right now we don't really have this stuff, but we are moving towards that you can read about what these ambassador program. Right now you have to join down or you have to talk to people individually. And look for specific things like this is not like one shop, stop shop for this information. And because from one side, this is something that is already recurring theme from what. And it's like now I put my set different hat on, I'm a swarm community member. And what we do there is like replicate these kinds of methods of how do you. Create communities and ecosystems and then. Yeah, and ambassador program is like one of these, like I would say my personal best project that I've been part of. In, 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 in terms of like decentralization and giving power to the people who join. So yeah, there will, there will be documentation, how do we. Re, redo that. And I think there will be also some. Align catalyst proposals, but yeah, how far these will go, I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe we should have a talk about that. And put these. Ideas to into paper where we should be, be, be fond that initiative. So that has like a. Stronger start perhaps, although there are dangers too.
Dangerous as in scrutiny, I imagine, but.
Yeah, and like, hmm, sometimes when there is a honeypot, uh, it's, it's kind of. Hmm, I don't know how to describe it. It makes it more difficult to decide on what's the real thing needs to be done. It requires like. You know, very specific people in call perhaps. I just have had, have had situation with it, where you say, hey, we have five thousand to do this, then it's, it gets like. More complicated than it should. Than just doing a thing and nobody gets funding and like, okay, let's just do it because we need it and it's gets done usually. Quite good and effectively.
I also see some conversation happening in chat, uh, on, uh, getting a town hall breakout room for this, but. I'm not exactly sure if that's the right fit since that would be deep funding rather than, um.
There's, the following, those days, there's a town, oh, it's deep funding, I write, I think so.
Uh, but I mean, we can also just, um. For those interested, like do, do a call out on, uh, both Discord, uh, both Discords, I should say, also Estal's Discord. And Telegram. Try to, um, bring all interested people together and go from there.
Well, all, all of them, if, if there's, I'll, I'll speak to, uh. To everyone, right? And Matt seemed into, interested in Stuart and Zoli and so, you know.
No, no, I mean, oh, well, there's, there's two ways of going about it, like you can do all of the internal, uh.
I know, I meant them doing a call out on, on like Rejuve and Hypercycle and stuff, if, if they're, if they're interested in getting.
Well, there's a question of going about it, like either, uh, pick a spin-off project and try to get everybody that cares about that spin-off. Involved and, and see where that goes or, uh, get everybody, um, on the project, uh, representative level, let's say. The spin-off representatives, get those all together, that would also be pretty amazing in a way, like right now we're doing, um. And, and Judith, maybe, uh, if you want to jump in, feel free to, of course, um, but, um. We're, we're reaching out to the spin-off projects, trying to get this going. So, yeah, I could also see. You know, a big goal with all the, um, project representatives.
Yeah, lovely. Let's, let's try and push for that. Yeah, let's push for that then. If, if you're, you're trying that. You talked about trying for a while to, to get this kind of thing going. Let's push them and get everyone involved. You said like at least one, but. If we can get two people from each project just to be representatives, yeah?
Yeah, makes me wonder if we could allocate, um, coming, like on, on Friday, we've got a. A call for the marketing guild, which is right now in the process of this reach out. Maybe we can just use that session and try to get as many, um, spin-off projects in that call? Judith, what do you think about this?
Um. Well, it's already Tuesday, so it's a bit short notice for them, I think, if you want to do it this Friday already. Um. Since the contacts are established, it's a matter of, uh, Slade and I just sending out the messages. I mean, we do have. We made contact with all of them as far as I know now, so we can try for this Friday, but I think it would make sense to. Maybe do it the week after, so they have a bit more. More time or maybe we can, I guess we can't use a town hall, but yeah, marketing meeting next week then would be. An option.
No, I think we can also do some prep, um, like not in the call, uh, like, like beforehand, like, um. Sharing a bit of what we offer, um, posing some questions they might, uh, as a spin-off, uh, need to think about before that call, that kind of stuff. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, however, we did just message them with exactly those questions, basically, so I'm, I'm not sure how willing they are to join a meeting. Um, but yeah, we can try.
Hmm, cool. Okay. Um. Yeah, I would say basically for anybody in the call, um, additional thoughts on the topic, let's, let's put those at least in the marketing, uh, marketing guild channel. Uh, very open to input there.
On that topic as well, um. We are looking for people that want to be interested, uh, that are interested in outreach, so if you are that person, please. Um, let us know, because right now we're a bit short-staffed, I would say. There's only. Two to three people right now that want to get involved in out outreach and it's. Um. I guess it's limited what we can do with two to three people. So if you have an interest, please let us know and I'll put out another post. Um. Regarding that as well.
Perfect. I'll make sure to, um. Might need a slightly different messaging, but also to push that to Telegram side of things, because. Uh, I do think that that would reach. Quite a lot of people that, that would like, for, for example, for Estal, like for sure, there's like ten people that should be interested in this, so, yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
Alright, that's, uh, big to be continued. Good stuff. Um, looking at the clock, I do want to respect everybody's time and we're running twelve minutes over right now. Um. Yeah, so I think for, for now, this is a, a good start. Thanks a lot, uh, Russ for coming on. Um, quick check in the room, is there anything else we should be touching on this town hall? Preferably a short topic.
Yeah, I was also thinking. A PBL course for. Like creating. A learning ambassador or something like that. Because we're reading what, um, when he mentioned to Russell. And how do you like read documentation and, uh. Share information.
Yeah, very true. There's a lot of overlaps, every, for example, education guild comes to mind, where we're now trying to make. Educational content about all these spinoffs without direct spinoff involvement. So it would be so much quicker if we have. A representative from the spinoff or a knowledgeable person, let's say. Uh, doing that rather than, uh, people figuring out the information and then trying to rehash it into something educational.
Yeah, 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 for sure. All you need is one person to turn up and. Answer a few questions and give them a rundown of what's going on, right?
Nice. Okay, uh, yeah, I would say, uh, keep ideating on in the marketing guild channel. Any ideas that could be explored, feel free to drop them there.
Where is the marketing guild channel, by the way? That's not on Discord.
Uh, yeah, it is. It's on the, let me quickly check. I think it's an open channel, should be. Yeah, it's, uh, under ambassador.
Oh, I see. Sorry, there's ambassador program, then there's guild. Alright, okay, great.
Yeah, when you say it like that, the organization is not optimal, I guess, but, um, that's where it is indeed. Alright, um. I think that covers for today. Thanks again, everybody for attending, um. Yeah, hope to see you in one of the many upcoming calls.